Ladies and gentlemen, we're welcome and we'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. Commissioner Schaefer will lead us in prayer and then following that Commissioner Phillips will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pause for a moment and remember the servicemen and women that we have stationed around the world, that whose mission it is to protect our freedom. I ran across a little blurb that I would like to share with you all tonight. It talks about two words: fear and faith. Fear imprisons, whereas faith liberates. Fear paralyzes while faith empowers. Fear desheartens while faith encourages. Fear sickens, faith heals. Fear makes useless, faith makes serviceable. Fear puts hopelessness at the heart of life while faith rejoices in its God. And dear Father, please take our fears and our inhibitions and all our lies and give us the faith to be just and truthful in your eyes. And dear Lord, tonight we'd also just like to lift up to you the recent college graduates in our area and also the 2,600 or so high school graduates that we'll have in our county
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
in this next week.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
And we just ask you to give them the faith and the guidance and the wisdom to be the
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you very much. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting.
leaders of tomorrow. And dear Lord, we thank you and ask you to give us the grace to work for what we ask
Commissioner Phillips.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed those minutes, find them in order, and move that they be approved as mailed.
All right.
in prayer, in Jesus' name.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Did anyone find any corrections or additions?
Amen.
(inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have two resolutions of recognition tonight, and first we're going to call on Commissioner
it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff Jordan to recognize a very talented young lady, and we'll let him have this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. If Coach Wild would come up, please, in Shakobia Barbie, Riverdale High School, I appreciate
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
you coming up if you would, and join me at the podium.
Commissioner Schaefer.
As the commissioners and most of the audience is well aware, this is one of the nice things,
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
fun things that we get to do, is to honor students, student athletes, and our citizens
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
when they do some great, great things.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
I want to, you notice I'll be the shortest one up here, that's true almost all, no matter
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
who's up here, but it's particularly true tonight.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
I want just to call attention to three other people, one who is not here, but I want to
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
thank Carrie Malone, who's right back there, for his help tonight.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
And I also want to mention something else that has come up since this resolution was written, and that is that we had two other players in girls' basketball in our county that were members of the Tennessee Sportswriters All-State Team, which is a very rare honor. One of them is Shanice Kason, who's at Segal High School, and the other is Taisha Petty. I am taller, barely, than Taisha, and I want her to stand up if you would, back there, please, and a member of the All-State Team, right there, Riverdale High School. Thank you, Taisha, I appreciate your help. We have a resolution honoring Ms. Barbie for something that's only happened twice, and that is a girl from Rutherford County winning the highest award the TWSAA can bestow on anyone, and a lot of people vote on this award. It always goes to, usually, to a senior, but not always. And she's really in competition with girls from over 100 schools that are playing basketball. You can imagine how many that is on the AAA level. But here is the resolution. Whereas the Riverdale Lady Warriors finished their 2010-2011 season as the Peach State Champions, the regular season seven, AAA District seven, and Region four champions, and became only the second team in TWSAA history to score 100 points in becoming sectional champions. And whereas, in addition, the Riverdale squad celebrated a 55-year winning streak over two seasons during the year and garnered numerous honors. And whereas the most important individual honor was bestowed on Riverdale junior forward Shakobia Barbie on the final night of the state tournament. And whereas on March 12th Shakobia was named the 2011 winner of the Miss Basketball Award for TWSAA for Class AAA. And whereas Shakobia had previously been named the Gatorade Player of the Year, the Tennessean Player of the Year in 2010, state tournament MVP in 2010, district MVP both last year and this year, and has since been named the Tennessee Sportswriters All-State Team, and it's not in this resolution because it happened since then, but she was also awarded for the second year in a row the Daily News Journal Player of the Year. Whereas Shakobia has statistics that are outstanding, including averaging over 17 points and nine rebounds a game, and numerous steals, blocks, and assists, and has scored nearly 1,700 career points and over 900 rebounds. And whereas, in addition to her athletic abilities, she has maintained a 3.5 grade-point average. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 12th day of May 2011, does hereby extend our congratulations to Shakobia Barbie for being named the 2011 TWSAA Tennessee Miss Basketball Award winner, and we wish her much success and happiness in all her future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of recognition be forwarded to Shakobia by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second by several, any number. Mr. Farley.
All in favor, I assume that would be unanimous.
Yes, everybody. Everyone say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Now continue on, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coach Wild, who is probably one of the most modest people that I have ever met in my life, is not going to mention to you that he also is Coach of the Year this year, did an outstanding job, and he wants to address the group for just a moment. Coach Wild, thank you, and Shakobia very much for being here. I was out at Walter Hill School the other day, and I was looking at the trophy case, and I saw there was a ball in the trophy case, and it was the coach Jeff Jordan on that ball, went 24-0, so I went in Tom Nolan's office and asked him if he minded at all, and he said he didn't, that we're going to put Jeff on a bus to Memphis Central with us in December. I think, I appreciate y'all having us here tonight, myself, and Shakobia and our team. Thank you, Jeff, for having us here. I think Shakobia would echo what I'm about to say, and, you know, all the accolades that she received this year wouldn't be possible without her teammates, and right now I'd like our team, the Lady Warriors from Riverdale High School, to stand up in the back, we're going to applaud them. You know, you coach, and you coach, and you coach, and some people coach 30 years and never come across a bunch like the bunch that we have right now at Riverdale, and a player like Shakobia, you just, you know, you consider yourself blessed, and I'm truly blessed to have this bunch and to have a player like her, and the parents we have to support our program. If you had never been out to a game, we'd like to invite everybody to come out and watch these kids play, because, you know, when you're sitting there watching them play, it sure is fun, and, you know, I know it's doubly fun if you come and watch them, you know, on the bleachers one night next season. We'd hope to get back in the position we were in this year, and that's to compete for a state championship, and we just appreciate Riverdale's support, Murfreesboro's support, and what you guys did for us tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Coach Wild and Shakobia, and all of you young ladies that are participating. I have, over the last several years, grown to love women's basketball even more than most any of the other sports, and thank you for what you're doing and what you're accomplishing, and certainly your academic accomplishments as well are really rewarding. So thank you very, very much, we appreciate that. Let me see, next we have another resolution of recognition, and we're going to call on Commissioner Allen, and she's going to be recognizing the Smyrna High School bowling team.
I'd like for the Smyrna Commissioners to join me if you'd like to, Commissioner Turner and Stevens, and then if the team, the coaches and team of the bowling team would come forward, I'd appreciate that as well. This is just to let you all know that we do things very well in Smyrna besides football, although we do lots of things well, and this particular group of gentlemen, they have dominated in this field for quite some time, so I'm very excited to have them here, and Coach Richardson. Unfortunately, Coach Lindsey was not able to be with us tonight, but we're very proud of all of them. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and organizations that consistently have a positive impact on the people and communities of Rutherford County, and whereas the students, coaches, and parent volunteers associated with the Smyrna High School bowling team are all part of one such outstanding organization, which recently won the Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association Division One Championship Game, earning Smyrna High School its fourth state bowling title since 2005. And whereas this has been an exciting and impressive 21-1 season, and special commendation is due to all team members, along with head coach Candace Lindsey and assistant coach Donnie Richardson, for their dedication and commitment, they gave Smyrna another memorable season and brought excellent publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. And whereas the team entered the final match behind Wilson Central High School, 7-5 to 8-5, and knowing what it had to do to secure the title, the team battled back with a 7-1 win and ended the match with a final score of 14-5 to 9-5, thus proving the team's own motto, "You never give up and every pin counts." Whereas, in addition to the team advancing to the state championship, the top four players in each division also advanced to the individual state tournament, and Smyrna High School's bowling team occupied all four available slots, specifically with the following players: Brandon Barnes with a 223 average, Chris Gillis with a 219 average, Wes Conister with a 213 average, and Cory Akins with a 212 average. And whereas through this sport, Brandon Barnes is looking to continue his bowling career at Morehead State University in Kentucky. And whereas the 2011 team co-captains are Brandon Barnes and Chris Gillis, and rounding out the team are Cory Akins, Ronnie Clardy, Timothy Lewis, Joey Finney, Brett Lee, Wes
will recognize Mr. Donald Todd.
Conister, Lee Roland, and Jacob Wolf. And now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this legislative body extends this resolution of recognition to the 2011 Smyrna High School bowling team
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane.
for its outstanding accomplishment of winning the 2011 Division One State Championship, and
Metro agents secretly promote socialism.
to Coach Candace Lindsey and her assistant coach Donnie Richardson for their dedication and commitment to these students.
Since 2007, residents of Blackman Community have been under a threat of being annexed
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Stevens.
by the city of Murfreesboro against their wishes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. These suburban residents have every right to oppose living under city rule.
To the commission, we thank you, we appreciate you.
They chose to live outside the city because they did not want to pay both city and county taxes. They were willing to live without the services that city taxes usually provide, such as
To the coaches, sorry Candy couldn't be here, but we have to work, I'm sorry.
sewer and trash removal and so forth. During the period of time just before and after February 1st, 2007, news articles revealed
And to the team, yes, we were down during the state championship, but a little huddle
that officials in the city of Murfreesboro admitted that because of lack of money, a
and the one thing that we all, even with the football team, we all say we believe,
large portion of the Blackman Community will not be provided sewer service for a very
and then we come back and won.
long, long time in the future, even after the annexation would take effect.
So we had a good, great, great group of kids, and hopefully next year we'll be back up
In that event, suburban taxpayers will pay the same taxes as city residents without receiving
here again. Thank you.
Thank you.
the same sewer services. Do the citizens have a constitutional right to ask for justice in this case? Yes. But the constitutional right of trial by jury for property owners who are annexed was taken away in 1998, and therefore their means of securing a strong legal defense was removed. During the current session of the Legislature House Bill 1371 has been introduced to restore the right of trial by jury for property owners who are annexed, because Metrocrats and Metro Government are determined to destroy any kind of citizen self-rule, including trial by jury. It is not surprising that two Metro Agents from the Tennessee Municipal League recently warned one of our middle Tennessee state legislators, a representative, not to permit House Bill 1371 to be adopted. And according to this representative, it is the usual practice in cases like this for Metro Agents to suggest that federal grants and loans would be withheld from our state if the legislature restores the right of trial by jury. Shockingly, that is the scenario that actually took place. In order for the local governments to continue receiving federal grants, are we citizens expected to give away our constitutional rights of self-rule? No, a thousand times no. Let's put a stop to all of this. Metro officials are using annexation throughout the country as a tool to force extremely expensive city regulations upon additional thousands of people, and ultimately forcing financial hardships and in some cases bankruptcy upon them, which in turn will bring about a socialist government. Metro wants this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Todd. Next, we will call on Commissioner Phillips, I believe, for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I believe you have a list of the notaries in front of you, and Mr. Chairman, I move that they be approved.
Second by Commissioner Sandlin. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Steering Committee needs to announce a vacancy on the Correctional Work Center Board, and we need to fill a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Steering Committee recommends Jared Barrett to fill that position, and I move for his approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We need to fill three vacancies on the Lineball Library Board, and the Steering Committee recommends Neil Blankenship, Kristy Lee, both of those are for reappointment, and Kerry Sostrom, and that'd be for a new appointment. I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Young and others. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also need to fill a vacancy on the Highland Realm Regional Library Board, and we recommend Neil Blankenship to be reappointed to that board.
Mr. Jernigan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Phillips. There is no unfinished business. Now we'll start the reports by standing committees, and we do not have a report tonight from the Purchasing Committee, so we're ready for Commissioner Ely to hop her way to the podium here and begin the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
I'll take all the pity I can get. Let's begin, please, with item J-2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows: From the Drug Court, from unassigned fund balance $3,000 to other supplies and materials, this is funding for drug screens. County Buildings, from miscellaneous gasoline $3,000 to county buildings gasoline $3,000. From unassigned fund balance $32,000 to utilities $32,000. From employee benefits, employee insurance $1,770 to county buildings, employee insurance From the Sheriff's Department and Jail, increased revenue, contracted services $80, contributions and gifts $40, increased expenditures in service training $120. Increased revenue from sale of recycled materials $317, increase in expenditures for maintenance and repair of buildings $317. Increased revenue of contributions and gifts $175, increased expenditures, office supplies $175. From JWC, restricted for public safety, jail, workhouse, and courthouse $56,540 to jail and building improvements $56,540. And this is for improvement to security, specifically the security card reader system. Increased revenue, contributions, and gifts $100, increased expenditures, other supplies and materials $100. Resolved this 12th day of May 2011, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Serrino. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Item J-2B, Special Fund, excuse me, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose Fund DEA Asset Forfeiter Fund be amended as follows: Sheriff's Department, increased revenue asset forfeiture $71,996, investment income $36,000, increased expenditures in service training $7,986, confidential drug enforcement $46,776, building maintenance $1,321, maintenance and repair of vehicles $2,704, animal and food supplies $1,807, law enforcement supplies $296, uniforms $927, other supplies and material $3,215, data processing equipment $7,000. Resolved this 12th day of May 2011, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2C, A Solid Waste Sanitation Fund. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Solid Waste Sanitation Fund be amended as follows: Miscellaneous, increased revenue, insurance recovery $29,850, increased expenditures judgment $29,850. And this, of course, is the result of a truck being totaled. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2D, A Resolution Awarding the On-Site Medical Clinic to Take Care. Whereas the Purchasing Committee issued requests for proposals for Rutherford County's on-site medical clinics with four bids being received. And whereas the Insurance Committee selected and interviewed three companies with two finalists being selected: Take Care, a Walgreens company, and Cigna On-Site Health. And whereas it is being proposed that Rutherford County's on-site medical clinics be awarded to Take Care effective September 1, 2011, with an annual cost of $1,753,518, excluding startup costs. And whereas Take Care quoted startup cost of $231,977, with the expected true startup cost to be significantly less upon auditing the clinics. And whereas Take Care proposes to provide a staff, including physician and nurse practitioner services, which would be specifically dedicated to Rutherford County employees, to provide additional administrative staff to better manage clinic appointment times and clinic services, as well as wellness and population health services, with the clinic locations and the hours of operation to remain the same. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a contract with Take Care, a Walgreens company, for the administration and operation of Rutherford County's on-site medical clinics effective September 1, 2011, with an annual cost of $1,753,518, excluding startup cost, with the true startup cost to be determined upon an audit of the clinics. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan, second. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. Chairman, I need to declare that I'm an employee of Walgreens, parent company of Take Care, and I have a conflict of interest. However, my vote tonight will reflect my conscience and the best interests of my constituents.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Sandlin.
I asked this question in budgetary process, and I've had a couple of questions from some commissioners before tonight about the very same thing, is the startup cost. I was in a feeling of asking about the startup cost because of, you know, asking about, you know, they've got to do an inventory of what that is and everything. I don't know if Ms. Stinson needs to come up, we need to spend the rules or let her kind of elaborate on that, but there were some uncertainties here and about startup cost or excluding it except for startup cost, and we're actually approving up to $231,000 or $232,000 tonight to go up in startup cost. They kind of told us in budget that it's going to be much less than that, but really, I mean, we're saying up to $232,000 tonight.
It is correct, we are saying up to that, but we know full well, everything in each of these locations is ours already.
Yes.
They just assumed nothing is in there, and if they had to put everything in there, including inventory, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, it could be that much. But what we have there is a substantial amount of items and quantities and inventory is okay, but, so, I don't know how we could hold them accountable for a different number unless we did an inventory before the fact and then netted that against what they think they have.
I think that's probably what should have happened, because, I mean, you know, not to say this would happen, but, I mean, there's $232,000 on the table, and some companies in these crisis of crunch don't want to leave that money laying on the table. So not to say that they would or they wouldn't, I'm just saying, that's what we're saying as a governmental body, this money is on the table for you to take if you so choose to take it, and we're voting to approve that tonight. So that's the uncertainty, that's the whole warm and fuzzy I have about this thing. I mean, I like everything else about it, I think we got a good bid, I think the insurance company did, I mean, their insurance committee did their job, and as well as I think the Budget Committee did their job, but that's the only uncertainty I have about this, as well as maybe some other commissioners.
But I can assure you that our Finance Director and our Insurance Director will audit and review and be a very integral part of this inventory that takes place. We have two gentlemen here, and I'm not sure which one. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this something we have to approve tonight? Because I agree with Commissioner Sandlin, I would like to know exactly how much the startup fees are going to cost before we approve this. I noticed it's not effective until September 1st.
mayor be authorized to execute a contract with Take Care, a Walgreens company, for the administration and operation of Rutherford County's on-site medical clinics effective September 1, 2011, with an annual cost of $1,753,518 excluding startup cost, with the true startup cost to be determined upon an audit of the clinics. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan, second. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. Chairman, I need to declare that I'm an employee of Walgreens, parent company of Take Care, and I have a conflict of interest. However, my vote tonight will reflect my conscience and the best interests of our constituents.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Sandlin.
I ask this question in budgetary process, and I've had a couple of questions from some commissioners before tonight about the very same thing, is the startup cost. I was in a feeling of asking about the startup cost because of, you know, asking about, you know, they've got to do an inventory of what that is and everything. I don't know if Ms. Stinson needs to come up, we need to spend the rules, or let her kind of elaborate on that, but there were some uncertainties here and about startup cost or excluding it except for startup cost, and we're actually approving up to $231,000 or $232,000 tonight to go up in startup cost. They kind of told us in budget that it's going to be much less than that, but really, I mean, we're saying up to $232,000 tonight.
It is correct. We are saying up to that, but we know full well, everything in each of these locations is ours already.
Yes.
They just assume nothing is in there. And if they had to put everything in there, including inventory, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, it could be that much. But what we have there is a substantial amount of items and quantities and inventory is okay, but so I don't know how we could hold them accountable for a different number unless we did an inventory before the fact and then netted that against what they think they have to have.
I think that's probably what should have happened, because, I mean, you know, not to say this would happen, but I mean, there's $232,000 on the table, and some companies in these crisis of crunch don't want to leave that money laying on the table. So, not to say that they would or they wouldn't, I'm just saying, that's what we're saying as a governmental body, this money is on the table for you to take if you so choose to take it. And we're voting to approve that tonight. So, that's the uncertainty, that's the whole warm and fuzzy I have about this thing. I mean, I like everything else about it, I think we got a good bid, I think the insurance company did, I mean, their insurance committee did their job, and as well as I think the Budget Committee did their job. But that's the only uncertainty I have about this, as well as maybe some other commissioners.
But I can assure you that our Finance Director and our Insurance Director will audit and review and be a very integral part of this inventory that takes place. We have two gentlemen here, and I'm not sure which one. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this something we have to approve tonight? Because I agree with Commissioner Sandlin, I would like to know exactly how much the startup fees are going to cost before we approve this. I noticed it's not effective until September 1 of this year, so is this something we could do at our next meeting after we know exactly what it's going to cost us?
Well, we would have, we can let Ms. Stinson address this, but the inventory would have to be taken by us even prior to this time, if that's the information you need. I think we were proposing that the inventory would be taken concurrently with them taking over the operation.
Who's doing the audit?
Unless we would determine that.
Who's doing the audit, as the resolution says? Is the Take Care going to do that, or is that something that our employees are going to do?
Well, we'll be an integral part of it. I mean, we would, whatever inventory is taken, we'll have to sign off on and agree to that. Mr. Schaefer.
And wasn't the total cost, though, for Take Care for this, even if with the inventory, even if it went the full amount, was 5% less than what we're paying right now, is it not?
Yes, it is. Commissioner Jordan.
Well, you're absolutely right, Mayor. The Insurance Committee looked at all this, and the contract we're in with the current provider, this audit has to take place at close of business at their last day. Our insurance staff and our county people are going to be right there counting everything with them. There's no way to know this exact number until that date. And I believe this contract we're entering into is going to give us a little more flexibility to know in advance, but the people that are there now, the inventory will change, because they're still providing a service. So, we felt quite confident, the Insurance Committee, that our, that the current staff were going to hold this number as low as possible, because in the situation we're in, this is the best we thought we could do, because we can defer this a month, but we're still going to be in the same situation another month. And so, I don't think there, I feel, personally, I feel quite comfortable that Ms. Nolan and Ms. Stinson and their staffs are going to hold them accountable for every tongue depressor, flashlight, and everything else that's in there. That's just a worst-case scenario, that number. And that company was obligated to put that number out there, because, you know, they don't know what they're walking, they didn't have the opportunity to go inventory the clinics before they bid.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why, I'm looking at the bids right here, and Cigna was under 32%, and Take Care was under 5%. Why, with such a big difference, did we not go with Cigna?
Okay. Well, we may have to call on Mrs. Stinson, but there's an extensive amount of information there regarding that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules while Ms. Stinson to the opportunity to speak.
Second. Without any objection, the rules are suspended, and Ms. Stinson can address the specific question of Ms. Phillips regarding the Cigna number.
First, I'd like to address the issue regarding postponement of the decision. Changing clinics is a very comprehensive and complicated process. Our contract ends on August 30, and if we postpone it a month, it's going to impede on our ability to get the clinics off the ground. So, I am very concerned about postponing and be able to have clinics operational on September 1. In terms of the implementation to address that, the reason that we don't have an existing portfolio today is because of the inventory control mechanisms that are used in the clinics currently. And that is an area of improvement that we expect to see with the Take Care offering. As an example, there is no reconciliation process on the pharmaceuticals currently, which is why we can't say we have X number of pharmaceuticals in place, and because of prescribing guidelines, we'll be able to either retain or not retain a certain portion of those. The other is, you go in and you utilize a Band-Aid out of our clinics, that's not tracked at an individual level. What is tracked is, we are billed by clinic type for all of the supply orders that come through. So, it is imperative that we go in and we do that audit. We would do that even in the presence of an inventory control list that told us everything that was in the clinic, to verify that it's still there on the last day of service with the current vendor. And that's not to indicate that we have a distrust with our current vendor, but that's just smart business that you would do that. So, the process will be that if the contract is awarded, they will assign an implementation manager, and part of that will be to go out to the clinics, and I certainly intend to be part of that process. We have walked them through, they have visually looked at the clinics, and now it's kind of the nuts-and-bolts process. Built into their number, just to give you a better idea of why the number is what it is, you have startup costs associated with bringing on the clinics. We can't retain any of the staff with Care Here because of the Care Here contracts. So, we have $61,000 projected towards startup from a staffing perspective. You've got to bring them in, you've got to have their salaries as part of that, as well as the benefits, and that is the expected cost coming in the door with them. IT is another piece, that is probably the largest piece of that number that they have, and it comes in at $85,000. They will get in, they're determining if our, you know, lines are sufficient, if our equipment's sufficient, what additionally needs to be purchased, as an example. The other is the recruitment process and the promotion and communication. And what they do is, they build in an allowance from a marketing perspective of what they typically see on a startup. We'll sit down and devise the plan best for our employees on how to communicate that. We may use more electronic methods instead of mailers into the home, anything like that, any decision like that is going to lower that cost. You had referenced Cigna's proposal. If you will look at Cigna's proposal, their startup cost is in excess of $200,000 as well. The reason we didn't go with Cigna is because a lot of their expenses are buried on the medical admin side of our arrangement with them currently. One example is the health risk assessments and the biometric screenings that we currently perform in our clinics. That would be, the HRAs would be built in on the medical administration side of it. Wellness would be built in on the medical administration side of it. I had given an example with the Budget Committee about the disease management programs that we have in place currently. We have two disease management programs that we offer through Cigna, cost us $2.75 per employee per month. You can expect a full-fledged wellness program to go up that $5 per employee per month difference, which is really what it breaks down to, if you look at that sheet, over the current cost. So, that 30-odd percent is not an accurate number. In order for that to be trued up, we would have to go in and build out the cost for the services that are inside the medical admin, and apply that towards the projected cost that you see there.
You might also draw attention to the fact of the length of time that both of these companies have been providing this service and the number of clients.
Sure.
It is substantially, substantially different. Take Care has much, much more experience and many, many more clients, that they have already proven themselves to service well.
That is true, and that's a very valid point. Thank you for that reminder. When we originated with Care Here, they were pretty new. They had started their company in 2004, and we were one of their starting groups, and they learned along with us in the management of our on-site clinics. Take Care has been doing this in excess of 20 years, whereas Cigna has only been doing it for four years, and they have a very small population of clientele. It was important that we weren't somebody else's training tool. We wanted somebody that could come in and meet the needs that we've already identified that are not being met in our clinics, that they have ways to make sure that there are pharmaceuticals on-site, so that when our employees present with an issue, they can receive those medications, they know why they're coming, and how to best treat that care.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Ms. Stinson, I certainly appreciate it, and I knew I couldn't explain it as well as you have, and you did a great job at Budget, as well as here. Another thing that was asked at Budget that I've been asked, and I can't answer that, Commissioner works for Walgreens, and they're affiliated with Walgreens, or started that up, or whatever, what is the option there later on, that our employees may be able to go to Walgreens and be able to do that, or is that way on down the road?
Well, they currently have a client that they are doing that with, and it is an option to us. It would be at an additional cost. And I think that the first thing I need them to show us is that they can do what they've committed to and do it well, and let's start in our own clinics. I do want to point out that one clinic that we currently have is a shared arrangement with Town of Smyrna, and that clinic will not be available to us anymore because that affiliation is with Care Here. But the hours that our employees have access to in that clinic will be moved into the Stewart's Creek Clinic, so the hours will all be the same, and the county clinic locations will be the same.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Ms. Stinson, would you mention also, it's said in here about the dedicated employees with Take Care, and right now, with the present vendor, you can go to the same clinic three days in a row and see different people at it, whereas this now will be much more in line one day than the next.
Right. It will be more succinct in terms of treatment, based on the fact that the staff will be dedicated. The current staff that we have are, some are full-time, majority are part-time PRN status, and they are not dedicated just to Rutherford County, they treat in other locations that Care Here has as well. Their, you know, physicians can have private practices. And so, what we want is to have employees of Take Care or the clinics that come to work every day with one goal, and that is to provide the best care possible to the employees of Rutherford County. It's a tremendous investment that the county makes to have these clinics available. There's a lot of soft savings associated there, such as the ability to go into a clinic, be seen, and return back to work, and we want to make sure that that is an efficient process. And having that dedicated staff that's familiar with our employees will enable us to do that.
Any other questions of Ms. Stinson? Okay, well, thank you then. We'll go back into session. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item J-2B, A Resolution Authorizing 2011/2012 Property and Casualty Renewals. Whereas the property and casualty insurance are expiring July 1, 2011, and whereas it is being proposed to renew the property and inland marine coverage with travelers at an annual cost of $358,184, which reflects a 2% reduction in premium. And whereas it is being proposed to renew the crime insurance coverage with Great American at an annual cost of $8,900, which is the same rate as current. And whereas it is being proposed to renew the casualty insurance coverage with ACE USA at an annual cost of $668,933, which is a 3% increase in premium due to a 7% increase in exposure, and reflects a payment back to Rutherford County of $7,500 to be used for safety programs. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents regarding the property, inland marine, crime, and casualty insurance renewals, effective July 1, 2011, at a total cost of $1,036,017. Resolved this 12th day of May, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Dernigan. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Item J-2F, A Resolution Authorizing Health Insurance Premium Rates for the 2012 Plan Year. Whereas a review of Rutherford County's health insurance claims, experience, has revealed that the premium levels for all options, for all active employees, and for the pre-65 retired employees would be adequate through 2012. And whereas at the meeting on February 12, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved resolutions to phase in a 50% contribution rate structure for post-65 retirees, both grandfathered and non-grandfathered, whereby the contribution rate for the grandfathered post-65 retirees consisted of a 50% contribution rate for the spouse and a 25% contribution rate for the employee. And the contribution rate for the non-grandfathered post-65 retirees was set at 50%. Whereas the 2012 calendar year will be the fourth year to take the step increases for the post-65 retired employees. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the health insurance premium rates for the 2012 Plan Year remain the same with no increases for all options for all active employees and the pre-65 retired employees, and that the fourth year of the five-year plan to phase in step rate increases for the post-65 retired employees, both grandfathered and non-grandfathered, continue as applicable. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Coggan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item J-2G, A Resolution Authorizing a Two-Year Grant Contract with the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration for Drug Court. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of a two-year grant through the State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration Office of Criminal Justice Programs in the amount of $100,000, which requires no matching funds for the provision of administering state and federal grant funds to units of local government for enhancing drug court programs for the improvement of the criminal justice system. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration Office of Criminal Justice Programs, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, in the amount of $100,000, with no matching funds required. Resolved this 12th day of May, 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Serino. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Item J-2H, A Resolution Authorizing Inter-Agency Contract and Project Wet Contract. Whereas Project Wet, Water Education for Teachers, is part of the Stormwater Management Program and administered through the Discovery Center as a way for teachers to meet educational requirements. And whereas the Discovery Center will provide the facilitator to work with the teachers and school principals to explain and promote the Project Wet program. And whereas it is being proposed that an inter-agency contract between Rutherford County, Town of Smyrna, City of Laverne, and City of Murfreesboro be approved for the provision of sharing the cost and expenses totaling $35,000 associated with the Project Wet contract and implementation of Project Wet with the Discovery Center. And whereas it is also being proposed that a Project Wet contract between Rutherford County and the Discovery Center be approved for the provision of employing a Project Wet facilitator and setting forth the requirements of the Discovery Center and Rutherford County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the inter-agency contract between Rutherford County, Town of Smyrna, City of Laverne, and City of Murfreesboro, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of sharing the expenses associated with the Project Wet program. Additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to execute the Project Wet contract with the Discovery Center, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of employing a Project Wet facilitator and setting forth the requirements of the Discovery Center and Rutherford County. Resolved this 12th day of May, 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any- Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained, motion passes.
Item J2I, a resolution authorizing contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for litter removal activities on state highways. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the provision of litter removal activities on state highways located within the county's boundaries and outside municipalities in the amount of $33,785, covering 155 and 18100 miles. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of litter removal activities on state highways located within Rutherford County for the period of July 1, 2011, ending June 30, 2012. Resolve this 12th day of May, 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Black, second. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J2J, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for litter and trash collection grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Whereas Rutherford County intends to apply for the aforementioned grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation to be executed from July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2012. And whereas the contract for the grant will impose certain legal obligations upon Rutherford County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the county mayor of Rutherford County is authorized to apply on behalf of Rutherford County for a litter and trash collection grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. And that should, and that should said application be approved by the Tennessee Department of Transportation, the county mayor is hereby authorized to execute contracts or other necessary documents which may be required to signify acceptance of the litter and trash collection grant by Rutherford County. Resolve this 12th day of May, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Black, second. Any questions? Commissioner Turner as well. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Next, we'll have a resolution from the Health and Education Committee. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The two sets of attorneys in the Health Education Committee have already looked at this, and the Board of Community Care as well. This resolution reads as follows. Whereas the attached lease agreement by and between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Community Care of Rutherford County Incorporated for leasing of property situated in the 11th Civil District of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the operation of a nursing home and our home for the agent, a copy of said lease being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein at length verbatim as if set forth herein, has been approved by the Health and Education Committee, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said lease with Community Care of Rutherford County Incorporated for lease of said property. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to approve the lease agreement with Community Care of Rutherford County Incorporated for leasing of said property according to the terms and provisions contained in said lease agreement. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the lease agreement with Community Care of Rutherford County Incorporated. Resolve this 12th day of May, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Commissioner Turner, second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. No report from our Property Management Committee tonight. The Public Safety Committee has no report, but I'll call on Commissioner Farley to recognize the sheriff's report that he has prepared and left for you here. Commissioner Farley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, on your desk tonight, you've got it, end of the year, I think this is the first time we've ever received this, but it's, I've went over it and looked at it, it's some good information, but I wanted to, for the sheriff, want to let you all know that he's placed this on our desk tonight for, with some good information, so everybody to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Farley, and thank you, Sheriff. I'm taking a quick look at that just moments ago, and it's a very professionally prepared report, and I commend you for that. Now, Commissioner Stevens is going to report on behalf of the Public Works and Planning Committee a resolution regarding a parking easement with Smyrna Housing Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into and accept a parking easement from the Smyrna Housing Authority for additional parking to accommodate patients of the Rutherford County Health Department located in Smyrna, Tennessee. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners authorizes approval by the county mayor and other appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County a parking easement with the Smyrna Housing Authority for additional parking at the Rutherford County Health Department located in Smyrna, Tennessee. Said parking easement to be subject to final approval of the county attorney's office. Resolve this 12th day of May, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, from Commissioner Cook. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous, thank you. We have no report from the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee tonight. We do have, let's see, three pieces of other business tonight that have had to be placed on the agenda, so I don't know which one goes first. We'll let Ms. Ely go first, if you'd like, Ms. Ely, regarding the budget amendment for the sheriff's office. Are you prepared to do that? You included it, thank you very much, my oversight there, so that's good, so that took that one off the list. Now, we have a contract that we need to address regarding homeland security, and that's with respect to some software that's able to be purchased with some monies that were received because one of the other counties was unable to use their money. This has come to us at a late date. We have to execute this basically now, or we'll lose this particular money, so we're gonna, it's software that will allow our law enforcement jurisdictions, in particular the MTSU, our sheriff's office, and the City of Laverne are going to be participating and sharing in this effort. So, we're gonna let Commissioner Farley explain that and tell us how we should move forward.
You've got, I think, Mr. Allen has put a copy on your desk. If you'll turn over to page 17, I think there's a, may have a red flag there, but page 17 talks about what the software is. It's actually, as the mayor said, it's $152,091 that the county is going to be getting with no, no matching funds or anything like that. It's called Fat Pot. And what it is, it's for the PSAPs, the dispatch centers, that will be able to use this license and this software to be able to track their patrol cars and many other things through that process. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion, we approve the agreement.
All right, do we have a second? The second, Commissioner Phillips. And any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business that we need to have brought before this route tonight? Any announcements? Nope. Well, that's remarkable, thank you. You've been very efficient tonight. Excuse me, Commissioner Young.
The Rutherford County Sheriff's Department is having an open house this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. Sheriff Arnold would like to see everybody there, if they can, come out and see the Sheriff's Department, and I'd like the citizens to come out as well.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? There being no one rising, we are adjourned, and thank you very much.